I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are all.
Alright, morning everyone, welcome to our meeting. Have we had an opportunity to look at the agenda, any conflicts, otherwise considered the agenda approved. Madam Auditor, would you read the minutes of our previous meeting, please?
December 3rd, 2025, the Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 AM with Jean Hayden Chair Presiding, members present, were Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The Board approved the change of wage for Jeremy McKinney, Maintenance Employee 1, and Nolan Schmidt, Maintenance Employee 1, Engineers Office. The Board approved hiring of Brett Meadows, Chief Deputy, and Jordan Hanson, Deputy Sheriff's Office. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the following resolution, 2024-36, approving the use of Crawford County UEI number to the Secondary Roads Department. Voting I, Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg, minutes of the previous motion, sorry, motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg, to approve base stabilization SEAL Code project for M Avenue extending from the intersection with Ridge Road East to a point 50 feet east of the intersection with Yellow Smoke Road. And Yellow Smoke Road extending from the intersection with M Avenue South to the entrance of Yellow Smoke Park, motion passed unanimously. Qualified Roger Rasmussen as Sheriff for interim unexpired term per Iowa Code 69.14A, Subsection 2, Subsection B, Subsection 3. Qualify elected officials Terry Martin's County Auditor, Jean Hayden Board of Supervisors, and Ty Rossberg Board of Supervisors from the general election per Iowa Code, Chapter 63. Board had a discussion about the land use agreement with Friends of Yellow Smoke and putting land in the CRP as, oh, I don't think that's right, as a 501(c)(3). I think you just discussed it.
We just discussed.
But is as code, as 501(c)(3)?
It's just a nonprofit organization.
And that's what the Friends are not.
Right.
Friends of Yellow Smoke.
Just doesn't read right. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg, to approve the liquor license for the New Country Pumpkin. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at 10:24. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available to courthouse on Friday, 4:30 PM preceding the next meeting.
Alright, any additions or corrections?
I should have read them first. I didn't.
Alrighty.
Should that be worded differently than? As we discussed?
I think that 501(c)(3) part needs to come off of there.
Yeah.
Myself, but you tell me.
Yes, that's what I would do. The Board had a discussion about the land use agreement with Friends of Yellow Smoke.
That's just it. That's all it is.
Period.
Period.
Tell me to not sign this then?
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Alright.
Through that.
I'm gonna put a period there.
See, where it said Rogers.
And then we'll fix it on the computer that goes.
Okay.
Where it said Rogers, we had recognized as intern. Qualified him, but that also qualified him like us too. So, I mean, he's covered for four years. Okay.
He is our sheriff.
No objections, madam.
Alrighty, I signed it. That's good. Alrighty, Board of Supervisors meetings, I'll throw out really quickly that we had our public health meeting and Doug Sosman has decided to resign from his position due to some things going on that he just doesn't feel he'll have the time. He will stay on as our advisory. We've always had an advisory on there. But we did accept an application for us to approve from Jamie Gross, who's a physical therapist out at the hospital. And she's been our advisory person for the last five or five to 10 years. I can't remember if she remembers.
So is his the only position to fill? Was he up?
Yes, in December.
Doug was.
Doug and Marcy.
Oh, and Marcy.
So originally Marcy was going to resign because she retired and was kind of going to be out of town a lot. And she's, you know, but I talked to her a little bit and it's hard to have two new board members, especially on a board that there's so much information. It takes you a long time to get to speak. So she's agreed to stay on. And we might change the dates of the times. We're kind of working on that to accommodate that. And so I would like to have it on the agenda for next week to approve our new members. I think Marcy's getting her application.
Is she? Okay.
So we'd like to get that taken care of so we know that that is okay. And my concern was that the gender balance, and we did find out from our attorney that in April, our governor signed in, let's see, House File Number 2096, that said that they don't need to be gender balanced anymore. So we're going to be in compliance there. So, yeah, they're working on their budget and all stuff like that. But otherwise, it was a pretty routine meeting. Who else has anything they'd like to talk about today? Great, you're out.
Okay.
You worked for them last week.
I am pleased that I can publicly announce that Wesco's new CFO is Marcus Reiner, coming over from Whipto. And Marcus notified his board and also in the write-up to Whipto's monthly newsletter, he also put that in there. So I think he's starting sometime mid-December. And I know being on the Hiring Committee, Marcus is gonna bring tremendous talents to Wesco. So we're all very excited to have him. And I did, I was gonna, Kyle, I forgot he wasn't gonna be here, but I got a talk yesterday with Dalton Hamlin. And he's the guy that's doing our fencing and he's showing up this morning. So that should be done before the year's out. And I know Jim Muff was happy because that's, that pasture, I guess, is only water that stays, for sure stays open all winter. So sometimes he's gotta water his cows there. And so me and Kyle thought we might have to go out and do our own fencing. Just so his cows didn't get out, but lovely. Dalton's gonna be there this morning.
And he putting in the whole works or is he just gonna run up two strands or?
The whole thing. So he's taking, he said, I'll be out there with my bobcat and supplies sometime this morning.
Great.
So I forgot my little book, so that's all I'm gonna, that's all I got.
Well, it's Good News Tuesdays.
Yes.
Alright, let's keep the good news going.
Hey, um, I did have Sam Rodakis from Manella call me. He's on the City Council there. I talked to Ty and Kyle a little bit about it and Paul, I'll show you guys. They potentially wanna discuss going forward, similar projects like what was done in Splashwig for your truck route. So if you look, there's about a mile and three tents that head south out of Manella.
Projected up there?
I don't think it could. So from about here, around the lagoons, around Piercante Alley, back to this highway, of doing a shared project, maybe like a SEAL Code or a upgrade stabilization SEAL Code type deal. What they're running into is again, a lot of truck traffic from Landis going up to the grain pile. And then there's a lot of truck traffic going.
Is it all within city limits in Manella?
Nope.
No?
City Limits is a little sign somewhere. He said there's about three tents, four tents, city limit. But he just wanna possibly open up conversation about maybe a joint venture on.
What did we do this last week?
So we.
Not one road that goes by Adams. And I did ask you, it wasn't like god awful amount that we kicked in on that, but we paid for Adam and Country. The old sausage plant, Splashwig Summer Sausage. Go down that and then down to the corner. They redid that and we went halfsies with them because half of it is our street and half of it's theirs.
Gotcha.
Okay. That was a farm-to-market road, if I remember.
I think so. That's why we still had Adam.
Do you want that to be on the agenda?
I don't remember the whole thing.
Well, let's, will Paul bring it up? We can bring it up with Paul, but what I think might happen is kind of what we did in Vale. Might have to just take a couple of us to go with Paul to go sit down with Corey Gaskell and Sam and maybe their city manager. You know, just to see if it's even gonna go anywhere rather than discuss it all and get their ideas.
See what they're thinking.
See what they're thinking. Of course, like I told Sam, in any of these other projects like the Vale Bridge or Splashwig, we're not just gonna do it either. Don't expect that, you know, we have to, it has to be a shared deal between the two of us. It has to be beneficial to both.
And like I said to Dave, I think if it comes out an economic development perspective as well, you know, I mean, if there's some way that that can be combined with that, I mean, it's some of their better ground for developing that it's down that path. I mean, that makes it a little bit more palatable.
She do have a women's seat in here, but it's many beaches, a lot of traffic. They're very busy down there.
So I mean, there's, there's some things going on down there. I don't know what more room there is for what. I just don't know. I don't know who owns everything there. But I mean, if you look at it from that perspective, I mean, that's one of our more progressive small communities. As far as, you know, they're out there trying to grow yet. So, I mean, those are the things I'm interested in from my perspective.
And they weren't, I mean, they're not expecting anything. They just really wanted to sit down and open up conversation about what could be done. What are all options are.
We still only have so many dollars of road money to spend on stuff. And we do have some things in the part. I told Dave, I said, I really, really wanna make sure we keep that three-mile stretch in mind. Let me get that done before I'm off the board.
Same here. And I, yeah, I'm not trying to push a different project ahead of that either. It's just they brought it up and wanted to see if there's any, any available options. And like Sam said, maybe Landis is even interested in participating because it's million bushel corn pot.
And that's, this is, you get community buy-in and community participation, boy, it makes things a lot easier, you know, to, not only for us to swallow, but to convince our people that, you know, hey, they aren't depending just your tax dollars.
Jean, I think it was right about here in high school, Jared and I put Grandma and Grandpa's Cadillac in the ditch.
We'd had a better road maybe that way. Good memory there, Dave.
I was not driving.
No wonder you're always making sure you go to have lunch. Still paying old debts.
Good memory.
Then we have, of course, our ISAC meeting coming up. I've got Region 12 Thursday, which we do Rick's evaluation. So we'll give them a little extra time to do that.
Should be a pretty easy evaluation.
He does a fantastic job.
Fantastic job.
And when you, well, when you just look at the numbers, like I showed you guys the other week, of the dollars being spent through our region versus others.
Yep.
I mean, they're like Paul. They just go after it.
They just do. And they, they ever say no, you know, no matter what the request is, you know, they can help with whatever you need and look into it and get back to you. And they have, you know, it's a great group of it is, so.
You know, I don't know that they've ever heard this, where people, I know I've, I've used this when I'm talking to my people sometimes. Don't tell me why you can't do it. Let's figure out how we're gonna get it done. I've never, I'll bet they've never heard that because they're already trying to figure out how we're gonna get it done.
No complaints. Yeah, that's all you got?
Um, did I get it carried? We talked a little bit at Pop Barn, budgets, you're working on those, who are probably here, you said, next couple of weeks or?
Yep, should be before the end of the month. We'll have budgets out to the department heads and stuff. So we need guidance. They need guidance. Department heads need guidance as far as wages and.
Didn't we just do this a week ago?
Yeah, it feels like you've done it.
Sure.
I know.
That'd be kinda.
I wish it was.
You said you're gonna look into some of our evaluations and, or possibly?
I'm working on it. I have a, a new urban renewal area up in Splashwig I'm dealing with, trying to get that set up in the system. So it's taking every, ever so much longer.
Your favorite time of the year.
At least we'll kind of have an idea of where, what we're expected to come in or we're increasing or where we're at.
Can I bring a point on why we're talking about the budget? I think it would behoove this board not to tell anybody, but to help. What I've been like through the EMA and the Conference Board and some of the other things that because of, we've been digging through Conference Board, excuse me, EMA Board budgeting and what have you, and some of the confusion that you see in that, I, we, you know, started to talk about, I wonder how many other boards, you know, in particular that the mayors sit on that they're, because they, they don't do any kind of, you know, and I'm not saying this negatively, their time and what they do and what they've been taught to do, they don't really understand their role in the budget process for these other commissions and boards that they sit on. So I think it behooves us to make sure we're paying a little better attention to those to help and then get that word back. And we do have some mayors that are engaged right now. So I think it's, it's very important to take advantage of that way. We have the opportunity to maybe set a new trend on how to, how the county operates and, and the details. I mean, and it doesn't make it harder for the department heads, you know, whether it's EMA or 911 or, or the Conference Board. It doesn't make it harder for them if their people are engaged and actually understand the job. It actually makes it easier for them. So they got help, you know, and people that are actually looking at the things that, you know, I mean, I, I, I will tell you, and I'll, I'll just say it out loud. I keep looking back at the $800,000 we spent down at the conference in the assessor's office. And I keep asking myself, what were we doing that much for? And I mean, and, and I asked this, I mean, at the time, it seemed very legitimate. When I go back, it probably would still sell pretty good to me. But having talked to other assessors across the state, why we, because we were in the hiring process, you know, you just started to do a lot more checking and research that you typically probably wouldn't have done. And what I see that they do, now Franklin County is my prime example, but it's a smaller county than us. So it's easier for an assessor to do the lot of that themselves. But now they still use, what's the name of that county?
Vanguard.
Vanguard. They still use them, but it's for their big, it's the big operation, you know, the Smithfield and Anderson types, you know, that typically challenge their assessment. They still use Vanguard because then you got a third-party, non-biased per se organization.
With an expertise in it.
That, exactly, with, with even a similar expertise, but they evaluate more properties than just what your county has. So they do have a better expertise in certain, certain sense. But I think that if we would have did something like that, it'd have been a lot more cost-effective. Because I think that our housing stuff probably gets kept up with pretty well. I mean, I typically would see Cindy and Dwayne out a lot. It wasn't that they were not looking at properties and stuff. So I'm just looking at dollars and cents, you know, and what we're taxing, I mean, that's $800,000 we threw at the taxpayers.
We haven't paid it yet.
Yeah, I know. We're still in the process of paying. That's my point, you know, I mean, so I have to ask myself.
Well, it's always been brought up that, you know, we, we don't have any more parcels than we had when there was just two people in that.
Great point.
Has been brought up to me by taxpayers. And it's just this concern of what, you know, what's so different now that we have to have this big $800,000 group? And then we've got five employees and, you know.
We not paid it because we haven't used them or we just?
Yeah, the project hasn't happened. Isn't it scheduled for?
We did the commercial.
28 or isn't there a residential portion scheduled next?
Yeah.
It just hasn't happened yet.
It just hasn't happened.
The whole, I mean, as far as the commercial, I'm, that probably has happened.
I think it has.
But not the residential part?
There's been people around that, that people have asked me what's going on. And I said, it's probably Vanguard coming by that. So I don't know. We should.
Well, this is all good.
I don't know.
I did talk to Seth the other day. He is working on getting an agenda together for Conference Board. He will show us that so we can kind of look over it in case we wanna add something or see what it is. He is typically following the same dates of what we do in the past. He said it'd be end of January, first of February was what he said. And then, of course, they have to publish the agenda by the 10 and 20 rule.
Publish the notice of their budget, or the notice of the budget hearing.
Okay.
That comes after our initial budget meeting, though, I think. We have two of them because EMA followed it as well.
And then I did tell him about EMA and he's gonna get ahold of Zach.
Coordinate.
Coordinate so that it will do them back to back.
Simultaneously. And I'm not trying to pick on the assessors with that either. That's just one thing that sticks out in my mind.
It's big.
It's big.
Well, it might be something. We need to have.
So it's just something we.
More in-depth conversation of Conference Board on our agenda.
The question would be, you know, is do we have any options of narrowing it down and only doing commercial and cancel the contract on?
If we can or not, check.
That's why we brought it up, you know, are we locked in or are we just kind of simmering?
And they might have already started doing their.
Well, we.
Play out. Or should they have some money? Exactly.
Well, if anything, it'd be nice to have an update at the Conference Board meeting, what the Vanguard is doing, what.
What were they done to date?
Right.
What's due in the future?
Yeah.
Right.
What we paid today, what's due in the future.
Right. So write those questions down. But I, I almost feel like we should have that meeting earlier in January. So everybody kind of has a chance to, before you get things too set in stone, that, that, has he started working on his budget then too?
To be honest with you, I would send something out to your mayors earlier than that first meeting for them to go over. Because they're getting to be a good group of go-overs. I mean, there's some, some of them that'll really look at stuff, but they'll all check it over. I mean, I, I've been impressed with them through the EMA process.
Well, our last Conference Board meeting, there were a lot of.
Lot more engagement. So, I mean.
He said he was going to, when he sends it out and kind of gets our final approval of the agenda, at least as chaired with approval that what we wanted to discuss or add. Then he was gonna email.
We got all the addresses now, finally.
Yes.
The ones you can't email, we do have text messaging for that. It took forever to get that done, but we got it.
And that could be why we kind of, you know, not as many of our people attended because they just weren't getting the emails or.
And, and we don't just have the mayors on the Conference Board. We've got the super, or we've got the school boards. And they, they haven't always all got the message.
Right, right.
I don't even know if we all have the same people that are at it against. They need to do some checking on that.
Yeah, need to see if the school boards are still, you know, if they agree with point.
It's easy for us to know, but the mayors and the school boarders, they don't typically.
Rather find that out before the meeting than during the meeting that there's only one from there and you find out that nobody else got the notices because their email changed or they didn't get re-elected or, you know.
I don't remember if I did in the past, to be RSVP who was coming or not.
I don't think so.
I didn't either.
I think it's just who shows up and then you start.
Wouldn't be a bad idea, though.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
I mean, we do it for Region 12. We do it for a number of our other boards that, hey, please RSVP that you're gonna attend.
We know we got for a corn.
Maybe we had them that we could. Just how to get people to show up for sure. So, yeah, I think we need to start getting that lined up so that we're not behind the eight ball and.
And that's why I reached out to Seth to see where he would have it. He is well aware of it and working on the agenda.
I'm sure he is, so. I just can do it sooner than later and get those.
And that's right, go back to us.
Yep. Very good. Alright.
If you look at the hiring thing for Zach that's in the packet, it didn't list anything about the. The packet gets hatched it.
Yeah, it did.
Anyway, if you look at that paper, it's got his salaries, hiring, and then the $3,000 bump after sometime July 1st or after if he's completed all his training requirements. Which with the motivated attitude he has, I'm gonna say that'll probably be done by the end of January. But we still won't do any bumps in pay until July 1st. Or like I said, if he doesn't have it all done later. But he's also gonna take county insurance. We didn't know at that time. We didn't have Amy around that night. So we didn't know at that time what all he was gonna need for benefits. But we did offer the benefits back to however he is hired as an exempt employee. So work comp and that type of things don't, don't apply. Not work comp, uh.
Compensation.
Compensation. The hourly comp doesn't, that, that doesn't apply to it. Comp time, there you go. I'll get the right spit out.
Well, I don't hope you.
Lot of numbers running in my head. But the, the, good hire. I think we're gonna be very, very pleased with it. I mean, everybody's gonna be the world's greatest employee their first week, right?
Yeah.
But.
So did he start or when's his first day?
16th.
You get the office cleaned out?
So, I mean, it was a pipe dream of mine to have it done by Christmas, but you know how everything else goes. Spilling, I was hoping to be done by, you know, the first of the year. But I'll tell you what, you know, mayors really got to digging and, and we got some good people right away. Now, we had some drop out that I really wanted to interview. But I, I think we really got a great applicant and I think you got a great.
Is the office getting ready?
Well, that's gonna be the next trick, you know, that's probably one of his things to do before the first of the year is to get settled into an office. Kyle and I went down there, it's stuffed at all. I mean, because Dwayne's in there, Tim's in there. Uh, Tim, we did ask to stay on and I think $28 an hour, but his hours will be minimal. Probably be a few through this month yet, but then after that. So, I mean, we'll have some budget to deal with there on the amendment as far as payroll. But I suspect that once we get rolling into next year, Tim's hours will be minimal. And.
And he's going down to zero hours.
What's that?
In the future, he's going.
Yeah, he'll end up at, you know, I, I, I don't anticipate us needing backup long-term. I mean, there's some things that he's gotta be showing, especially with the new tower system. And obviously, Tim understands that better than anybody else in the county since that's what he does for 11. So, I mean, he's got the act, the asset to, you know, the access to somebody that can give him a lot of understanding of the tower system to watch over it properly. There's some things to work out there as far as the maintaining of the place and what have you to try to look after our budgeting, you know. I mean, I think there's some things that if we sit down with secondary road, yeah, EMA may have to budget for it because it's its own taxing entity and, and exchange monies with secondary roads so that there's transparency and, and there's no. So the money's all happening properly. But.
You think there's some things that currently secondary roads is paying for that EMA should be, should be paying?
Well, they helped us do some things originally. And I don't know what all got worked back and forth between Greg and Paul. I don't know. I didn't ask. And, you know, I mean, I don't remember what I have and haven't seen, to be honest with you, at this point. Because that was all pretty a year ago. But, you know, that we, we, well, we gotta maintain the rocks, the rock, obviously, most of the time it's on our property anyway. But like even Stan Spees, that was one of the things. He said, we'll maintain that road from now on. But just, it, it doesn't get a lot of heavy use. He's got a couple bins up there. He doesn't have any great amount of livestock up there anymore. He lets cows out in the fall, I think, if something wrong does. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty, it's typically, it's, it doesn't a lot of traffic. Will probably be the most majority amount of traffic except for when he's filling bins and emptying bins and harvesting there. So, I mean, then Charter Oak and Vale, I mean, all that's ours to the road. So that road, just keeping a little bit of gravel on it. Somebody's gotta pay for that gravel. You can't ask the general, our, our budget of secondary roads to pay for EMA stuff. So obviously, that'd be some kind of money exchanged there. So he'll have to budget for that through EMA and then reimburse Paul for whatever Paul's needing or the new crew over there, whatever they're needing, you know, comp for man hours, however Paul wants to bill that or Ben going forward, however they wanna bill that. So the, those are the type of things. But then there's also so much stuff that we gotta get straight with EMA. We're actually trying to get rid of, Kim's got a boatload of cots sitting over there that are for emergency purposes that are just in their way. So we're gonna take them out to the secondary roads, but they're just gonna maintain them, but they can use them in the event they're, for snow emergencies. But they'll maintain them, keep them at their place. And then if we need them for county, for civil emergencies, we can round them up from there. You know, so they're being, they're, they're not just sitting somewhere rotten in a box, you know, they're getting used. They might be sitting in a box anyway, but at least they'll be somewhere where they're not in the way.
You know, does she have that down in that storeroom and gave Brown some of those cots or?
I don't know for sure where they're at. I just, she made comment that there, she's got a bunch of them. She'd like to get the heck out of there.
Yeah, because I've been, yesterday I kind of said we need to get in there because I understand there's things that have expired, things. So I, we're not gonna pay that rent anymore. And so we'll find out there and there. And I asked if we needed to bring a dumpster.
Yeah, oh, don't throw them away. We've got place for them. But in any event, there's, there's a lot to do, but the, we got several mayors that are very engaged in it. And they'll probably be helping continue to kind of help facilitate whatever this person needs to get off to a good start. This person being Zach, get him off to a good start. And so I don't, I don't, I don't have a good answer how we're gonna do it. I don't know what 911's wanting to do. I mean, Dwayne's a, he's an employee. He's not an employee. He's a contractor. So I don't, I don't know that, I mean, I, I know he's been helping in there because of Greg's issues. But now that Greg's no longer with us and we do have Zach, I think we're gonna have to look at affording that space, that office, the space that's needed. It's a 12 by 12, so it's still not a lot of room in there. It's just a little bit bigger than Jake's closet, maybe.
Is that office gonna be needing a fresh painted coat or coat of paint?
I'll let him see what he thinks, but. I'll let him see what he thinks, but it's got so much stuff hanging on, there's TVs and all kinds of stuff hanging on the walls down there for monitoring their maps and stuff when there's a storm and what have you. So I mean, as far as that goes, I don't, I don't know. I'm sure that there's probably some things, but hopefully he's doing it uh, one step at a time economically, how's that? There's something to do there. Kyle was here, I mean, Kyle and I went down and looked at it, so I mean, we got a plan kind of started, I just don't wanna.
Well, I I think the question kind of is what needs to stay in there and what needs to go someplace else? And you know, sharing an office is always hard, especially a small office. And I think just a fresh start of this is your office and you're the only one, this is your stuff. I think just keeping them both in the same office might be difficult, it's about.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that you'll really need but the long desk and office and filing cabinet.
Was there talk of having the EMA person do nine, E nine one one?
Well, you know, that that's what we've seen in other counties. I mean, while there's been a little whispers of talking about, you know, what would you like to do in the future, nine one ones made no comment one way or the other what they wanna do. So I don't know.
I can see that making sense.
Well, you know, they gotta pay somebody and if it helps offset what the EMA's gotta tax the public citizen for. And if it's something that he can actually do, I I think this first six months, I mean, I I don't know what their plan is. But the first six months, he's gonna have a full plate with EMA.
Absolutely.
A very full plate, cause we, we're, we're, we're behind on a lot of.
Are you on the nine one one board too?
No, that's Kyle.
That's Kyle.
So that's why I'm trying not to speak out of turn here.
Got you, got you.
But I feel like Zach's not gonna come in and say, well, I want this whole office to myself, so I think that your commission probably needs to take the lead in.
Yep.
Getting him a desirable place, sharing it with somebody may not be desirable and get everything off on the wrong foot. I don't know if they'll walk a mile in either their shoes.
But ultimately, at the end of the day, we get a desirable, we give it the courthouse.
Yeah.
We say that it's gonna be Zach's thing.
That's exactly what the point that I brought up is, everything that happens in on account of our courthouse property actually is the domain of this board. And with this, you know, with Terry's guidance and that stuff, cause she's here day to day. But the uh, you know, I mean, I I don't know how that all came to be, I'm sure that Greg was okay with the idea.
Well, he was part-time and he had his own domain over there at his office and so a whole different dynamics here with our full-time. And my only hope is that he gets off to the right foot, you know, that he's feels welcome and that he has his own space.
Well, I don't know how much material sensitive nature they'll be, but if he, if your EMA's doing things right, he's actually coordinating, you know, with different agencies in the community that may have building plans that they don't want out in the open, I mean, a fire service has all that kind of stuff. I don't know what he has to have, I mean, I'm not an EMA coordinator, so I don't know all the detail. But if he's gotta have things of a sensitive nature, I want that behind lock and key. Cause you don't want that to be, you know, necessarily, and then if something would get out, well, who who did it? You know, I mean, I don't want the he said, she said, so let's bite that in the butt before we even get to it, you know?
Well, the question would be, do we have another small space for E nine one one to go to? So that they're not sharing this space, cause that might not be what Zach signed up for.
Well, and 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 that's the thing to discuss, I mean, it's not a contract job.
I don't think we're required to provide.
I, it's a contractor, so I don't know that having a spaces and this, it's always had a space because Dwayne did it, he was our assessor, so he had his office there.
Makes sense.
You know, but now he's basically contract and that's the only position that he holds with the county. And so I mean, I I I sure don't wanna, you feel like you're making a whole list here, so I'm not trying to do that, mind you, but you still, you know, we gotta take care of the EMA. That's our priority here, at least for our commission, but I'm trying to work with nine one one, see what they wanna do, I just haven't got any feedback yet. I mean, Kyle acted like, you know, this needs to be Zach's office, that was, that was the impression I got. But I think he didn't wanna speak out of turn because he's got a board that he answers to, so. I mean, it's been that way with me, we're dealing with this commission, I've been very careful not to try to lead it.
So how long do we actually have before Zach starts? What date is he?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
No, this.
Monday, Monday.
So we don't have much time.
No, no, we don't.
For me, and I always like to treat people the way I would like to be treated, you know, my first day on the job here, I didn't know where, you know, you wanna feel welcome. And I think to introduce him to a space that's already occupied for me would be overwhelming.
Can we, since we have a short meeting today anyways, let's take a little.
I, yeah.
Trip.
Yeah.
Go down there?
Yeah.
I don't have a key, do we have a key?
No idea, I don't have a.
I don't know if you have master keys, does Dave have a master key?
My, Dave might be able to give us, and then Dave or Pam.
Uh, but I I guess my, my concern is that if we need to get E nine one one's commission to get together, but it's not really up to them, you know? We have a space.
It's totally up to us, look at what we just did with moving Jake and.
Yeah, yeah.
Drafters and your, your equipment.
Well, I guess Dave, if it's up to us, then we need to take the bull by the horns and make the decision of when that office needs to be ready for a new full-time employee that's been hired to do a job for us.
So I think you need to take priority when you have a W two employee and a ten ninety nine employee.
Yep, yeah.
Said the W two would take priority and for ten ninety nine, I mean, you do all that on your own, there's no reason that Dwayne gets an office at home. And we don't need to provide an office and.
Well, and those are the tough decisions.
And the thing is, nine one one did computers and stuff for him, so what they wanna do with all that, I mean, did they wanna sign that out to him? How the heck they wanting to do it? That's on them, I mean, I'm, I'm trying not to speak for them, but.
Right, I understand, right, right. Is there, do you know with the new EMA position full-time, is there gonna be any computers, technology?
Well, he'll have that, yeah.
But will he go, is he in, talking to Jake yet about?
Well, he, there's computers down there that were great.
Greg had.
Has some, yeah, I didn't, maybe Zach needs to.
And I don't know.
Look at, once he's in there in the role, here's what I got, here's what I need when he assesses it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. He should, somebody should tell him to be talking to Jake if he needs something.
Well, part of the problem is, is if we don't kind of step up and get this done by Monday, then he's gonna, it's gonna be a, well, is this mine, is this yours, is, you know, I.
That's gonna be there anyway, it'd be.
Yeah, there's a ton of that. There's a ton of that, just learning the assets part, you know?
But.
I mean, that's the thing, is Tim will be helping him with the assets, cause there ain't just what's in that office. We've got a shed, we've got boats, we've got drones, I mean, it's, it's, and then we don't even, I don't even wanna get into everything else right now, to be honest with you. But there's things, he's got a full-time job ahead of him here, there's no, no two ways about it.
So the pickup that uh, Em, they bought purchased a while back, will that be something that Zach will have?
To me, that's his and he, he, because he's on call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, that, that's his to take home, just like the deputies do.
Okay, all right, but.
And that brings up another question, is the Dennison Fire Department thought it was theirs to haul boats around when they need it? Because I, this is something, and and I guess I'll just go ahead and open this can of worms right here, right now.
We got a shortened agenda, it's a good time.
All right, we've got boats that are for their purpose. They call it the Dennison Dive Team, when I got on that dive team, we called it the Crawford County Dive Team, but now I guess it's the Dennison Dive Team. Uh, boats for them, stuff like that, that water drone, I I I'm, I'm now having questions of how much of that's our financial responsibility? How much should be theirs? I mean, Terry asked me, who's paying for the insurance? There's a question for you, I mean, do we have to have a twenty-eight E on this drone?
Exactly.
Ding, 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 you're tracking me, right? I mean, we haven't used it for an emergency situation yet, but we have been out with it in training and stuff. But you see my point, these are the questions that weren't getting answered and a lot of it's recent enough that actually we didn't have an EMA. Everybody's part-time, I guess, but you, you see what I'm saying? We didn't have, I mean, Greg's been a little bit out of the network.
Correct.
Really, since we got that, like that water drone, so I mean, that's been a challenge that we've talked about it a time or two, what should we be doing here? And and then we got to.
But wasn't that money from both the city of Dennison and EMA at that time?
The fire, I think it was.
The fire department.
Fire department.
Or fire association. But paying for the underwater.
And that's the thing is, we've got that drone, that underwater drone. And I. To me, ours was like nine, our part, wasn't it? Or was that all?
It was about nine, I think the total, I feel like the total was around fourteen, Peggy probably knows, she's got the document right there in front of her.
My, my, my secretary on the EMA commission has been diligently at work here.
Right there.
And she's actually dug up a lot of good stuff, so there's, there's stuff, and I'm, and I'm hoping that you don't burn her out. What's that?
We ever used the underwater?
They've trained with it.
They've trained.
They've trained with it, I mean, the fire, I I, this isn't nothing to say nothing negative about the fire service, I mean, they do a great job of what they do over there in Dennison, Dennison Fire. But the uh, I mean, we, we gotta be able, we gotta pay attention to how things are being purchased. It's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money, so it's gotta be spent wisely and it's gotta be spent properly and it's gotta be insured properly and right now.
Big question mark.
There's a bit, too big a question.
So I guess the whole conversation today is to let's button some of these things up and let's kind of do what we need to do.
That's what the Jake will be, our new EMA guy will be doing.
That's gonna be a big part of Zach's job. And I think he's aware of it, I really do.
I think it's important for us on day one to have a place for him to, to.
I shouldn't say kid.
Hang his hat.
I don't.
He's a sharp person.
All right.
He was in the office yesterday.
It's easy to say that as we age, people that.
It gets me in trouble.
He's got the ambition. He's like, ready to roll, he could've started yesterday.
Don't let people miss out.
Been moving.
Well, I think it's gonna help though.
What was he doing?
In the fire service.
Paul's gonna help a lot.
So I mean, he's already connected to that, so he can.
Ignite, I think that he's doing very well. You know, when we were over there last.
I don't want him to look like a bad guy coming in and.
I don't know what he all does.
So I, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, kind of the portion, I want this stuff right, cause I do, I mean, that's for the, our job.
He's got a degree.
It's my responsibility as that chair to help that mission sort through this and help Zach engage in his job.
All right, so in between our, we get Pauls and then we'll.
So anyway, I took up plenty of your time.
Great.
You're welcome.
So what we'll do is before we uh, take action on the awarding the bid of the lighting over there, we'll run down there quick.
Run down there.
And see what what's going on, do we wanna call David soon?
Yeah, we need to get a hold of Dave.
Can you text him or something or?
Get a hold of who?
Dave, oh. Tell him about courthouse, Terry, I know we brought this up a while, a while back, hooked the mole.
Yep, don't have any.
Don't have any?
No.
Somebody did come.
Need to get the vents cleaned, that was one thing that they recommended that we clean out the vents.
It's still pouring water over here. Who came in?
Um, I can't remember the company that came in.
But they said we're all good.
Yeah, yeah.
Did Dave and Pam clean those up?
Probably to the extent, yeah, at least to get the surface of the vent, I mean, you can see how dust and grungy they are. When air blows through there, guess where that all goes, so, yeah, it'd be nice to, cause we have a lot of employees that suffer with seasonal allergies and, you know, the dust just aggravates it more. Do you have his stuff?
I don't have his number.
You have a groundkeeper?
I do.
Say, I can go grab my phone too.
I had to have a phone last election.
I got, I did too, I lost a whole bunch of them.
When they were having that phone issue, the Verizon, I lost a whole bunch of contacts, I'm still getting them back. Even lost my kids, good thing I knew it weren't.
Well, when I got rid of my Yahoo, it said caution, you may lose some of your contacts. So I thought, who, who could I lose?
She can't get rid of him.
I said, call Jerry Hayden, they're like, you have no contact named Jerry Hayden, I thought, I am in trouble now. So I, every now and again, I've lost somebody, like Sarah Hayden, I didn't ever.
I just go back to recent calls and be like, where are you?
Yeah, kinda like that, I knew Jerry's never by heart, so I could.
I even lost some of that stuff.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, yuck.
All right.
Okay, so can you get a hold, you got his number?
I just texted Dave to see if they keep the EMA room. Uh, we also, on Friday, Terry met and they got the window measured for Louisa's VA tap room that worked out good and they got the door ordered.
Is it something that'll make her satisfied?
Correct.
Yeah, fulfill one of her requests.
I got called away from that meeting, but they took over very nicely, we've got the outlets.
Looks really nice down there.
Outlets in for uh, the freezers upstairs, those are in, I'm still holding off on getting the deep cleaning done. Uh, I just wanna only have to do it once, I want it to be just clean and fresh for a moving day. Um, already starting to kind of think about who's gonna help us move our public health over, uh, once it's done. And I'm thinking, you know, the National Guard, like they mentioned, there's some of those folks that need to do some time, the prisoners could help. So we're, we're getting ourselves ready to move over, we're getting very, very close.
I know, Terry, I can ask you, but you sent out um, the Christmas crusade for kids, the money that was raised.
Yeah.
How does that compare to a year?
I think it was a little less than a year ago, I can't remember, Mary has those statistics.
I thought it was good.
Yeah, I thought it was good.
About eleven hundred?
Yeah, just shy, just shy of eleven, it was like a thousand thirty-five or something like that.
Pretty awesome for a couple hours of popping popcorn.
Right.
Well, it's mostly done by them, you know, donations are by the employees.
Yeah, there were some very generous donations, so that was nice.
I happened to, uh, some of the checks from our employees were.
Yeah, I think we'd like to do popcorn more often, at least to supplement the popcorn fund. So like in previous years, the popcorn fund has contributed towards that Christmas crusade fund to say, bring it up to eleven or twelve hundred dollars, that's what we normally would have done, but that fund has depleted. So I just wanna bring it back up and everybody enjoys the popcorn when it's happening, so.
I think if we do it on like every other, you know, Friday or Wednesday, just a certain day, where everybody kind of knows.
And we do it on a regular and they're expecting it and.
Cause you mean another month, you know, whenever, I think he'd bring their money in around, say he's about it. Hi, Paul.
Good morning.
How are ya?
Doing great.
Good. Very good.
A little wintry snow coming down out there.
Well, it's like a sauna in here, can you feel it in there?
You know, I walked in, Kathy had a short sleeve shirt on this way, I said, Gene, Kathy's cold out, she said, well, not in here.
You have to share, you.
I have no share.
Well, I will say this, it's better that it's too hot than too cold, cause if it was too cold and wasn't working, that would not be good. So.
Yeah.
And yeah.
This is after it's cooled off a while in here.
That's what I heard, it was really warm.
Yeah, I've actually.
Yeah, the Christmas group was already.
It's so hot.
Slow, that's what they say, low and slow.
Low and slow.
Yeah, uh, not a lot of new stuff here.
Sign what? What is it?
The uh.
I will need it. Whenever you're done.
I have looked at it.
Whenever you're done, I'll just pack it.
No, you're fine, uh, bridge project, all that in February, um, so that's good, uh, everything's a green light there. Uh, continue to push on the, the Downey Reed Bridge, um, it's just, we just have to wait until we get a response from her. That's what we're waiting on now is the railroad. That's what we have been waiting on since February.
They're off for the holiday.
Which holiday? Which one?
It starts in.
So. And I will be at that trade advisory meeting this week, this, next week.
The advisory meeting.
Yeah, for the governor's trade advisory council, I sit next to the railroad people in that. Oh, yeah, I don't know if it'll help or not, I've talked to their.
Sometimes it can.
You know, I've talked to several people down there and you, they ship products, they don't deal with, they don't wanna deal with overhead, great subversive sectors, although, you know, if it fails, then we have to go to a grade, at grade crossing, they don't like to hear that either, so I don't know. Try to be patient and diplomatic.
Well, the ones that are there.
Certainly not wanna be diplomatic.
People that work in the office, they like the turning pipes and stuff like that.
Yeah, so.
Just these people.
Otherwise, everything else is pretty much shut down, more in the snow removal, brush cut, kind of mow, maintenance service, that type of thing, so that's kind of where we're at right now. The uh, items for there, I'd put in a pickup purchase for possibly new, you know, hire and since uh, Tim's gonna be moving up, he'll need a pickup. Cause I think you guys are taking my thing, uh, to the boards. So, um, so anyhow, that's what this is, is uh, was getting that pickup situated, getting coming for him, so.
Yeah.
And then we'll probably, we talked about the office space kind of change, and so we're gonna start strategizing as soon as Louie's moves out, we'll kind of go in and do whatever we wanna do, if that's okay, I mean, we'll let you know what that is before we go with it. But it may be taking that wall out, that little log room there, maybe taking that out, not sure yet, uh, but get all that done and then maybe get a paint. Uh, but get all that done and then maybe get it painted, uh, if you think, oh, that'd be a good time to do that and then put the floor down.
We have.
And then we'll move it.
We have lots of paint.
Oh, leftover paint?
Yeah.
And our guys could probably come in and paint it for that matter, you know, I mean, I paint.
It's all over at public health, eleven colors.
Is it like a kind of a?
They're nice. They're nice colors.
Kind of a, yeah, okay.
There's always kitty whiskers. That's a good.
That's kind of neutral. I think I think we painted that in our house.
I think it's in the current V A office.
It's like a real light, like gray, kind of like a real light gray. That's a nice, that's a nice.
Almost leans to tote depending on the other.
It's very nice. But you wanna accent wall.
So that's good to know.
Yeah, need an accent wall then, you know, I know the guys love that.
Oh my, yeah.
I'll bring it over.
Paul, when would you get this truck?
Uh, we'll order it right away. Probably get it after the first year.
So when you look is perplexed as I do with the interior design stuff.
Not my wheelhouse.
Somebody's gotta make these big decisions, Craig.
Yeah.
Big. I'll make the motion to approve item number four.
Alright.
Say it.
Alright, any further discussion about the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Dodge Ram? All favor aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. That has been approved.
Uh, item six there, um, apparently there wasn't enough cement. We put a number in and then had a testing company that evaluated it and gave a mixed design, and that number didn't get changed in the. In the D O T area where I was doing the estimate. So that estimate is closer to three hundred fifteen thousand as opposed to the number I gave you last week. So just to let you know, so.
Still divide that by a mile of concrete. Yeah, it's about a mile. It's about a mile.
Three fifteen a mile.
Yeah, yeah, and that's our estimate. We'll see, you know, how it comes in. Hopefully it come in lower than that. But the the quantity of cement was about double what I had in there initially, so. I didn't catch that. My apologies. Uh, safety meeting scheduled for the nineteenth, down at the Menlo Shop. There'll be soup and sandwiches. I was having a few little giveaways for the guys and. And then we'll also do the hearing test. I think you're signed up for that, but we'll start that at like nine thirty, and if anybody wants to, we'll get some towards the end of the. Run there. If somebody wants to slip in, you just have to fill out a deal and let them know, so.
Paul, I'll just say come in towards the end.
Yeah, I think. I'd have to check and see where you're at in the schedule. I know you're on there.
Do they text you or email or?
I can just send you a text. Yeah, they show you where you're at, so.
With that, Paul, I brought up to these guys when I talked to you about on the phone with Sam Rodak, and I talked to Ty and Kyle a little bit about it. Sam was gonna talk to Corey Gaskill and kind of maybe see what members of the city council and the mayor there.
Yeah.
I didn't know what the nineteenth after the meeting, since we're already right there.
We can go look at it. So are you talking about the north-south section or the east-west mile?
Oh, from where it curves around Beard County to Foster, all those things.
Okay, so that's the, that's the east-west section. It's in the county, fully within the county.
So Sam went and drove it, and he said it's like one point three miles, and he said three tenths were, four tenths were in city limits, uh, after you called. So what do you thought?
Yeah, cuz it's like a mile from one side to the other. I mean, I didn't measure it with anything, but it's about a mile, but, you know, I think the thing. You know, I was looking at that, talking to the guys, you know, um. And we're willing to look at it into anything, but you know, the 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 traffic count shows thirty-five vehicles a day on that road. And I don't recall ever having any issues with it, other than a lot of heavy semi-traffic from the pile to the elevator at harvest time. So I mean, you have to kind of look at, you know, but what what's the characteristic of the traffic? What's the volume of the traffic? And the ones that we're targeting are well over a hundred, you know, that hundred fifty to a hundred, two hundred. So, so that's just kind of why, you know.
Something we had.
Up to the highway.
Okay, so yeah, we already seal coat that.
Yeah.
That's already seal coated, uh, but it'd be going, oh, okay. Yeah, I see where you're looking.
Yeah, like you said, they just wanted to.
Well, and.
Wait some options, see what was available, discuss.
So here's the thing, if we just seal coat it, we had this discussion about Obanion Road, you know, down there. You know, cuz I don't know if you recall, Tom, Michael were in here and, you know, cuz they had some farm ground down in Harrison County. And you know, it's like, you know, I think I use the analogy, it's like the, it's like the pizza on the crust or the crust or the toppings on the pizza. You know, if you don't have a good crust underneath of it, it's no good. And so you have to have a good foundation. So that's why we ended up doing what we did down there. Was a twelve inch stabilized subgrade, which I think is gonna perform well. If we just went in there and seal coated that, you know, they would get a dusty surface, but it probably would not hold up very, very well. And and so I think really what what should happen, anything's up for discussion. But anything's up for discussion, but then we have to have some sort of way to to kind of say, okay, what are the boxes that we check? That kind of make this one rise to the area where we need that. And traffic by gravel roads, when you get a gravel road here, it gets over a hundred and fifty vehicles a day. They're really hard to take care of.
Yeah.
You know, and and so that's kind of what we've been targeting on, is some of those high-volume gravel roads. You know, if there's something down there that changes, and I don't know if the city's interested in participating, you know. Would be extremely rare to have a city participate in something outside their city limits.
What about the people that would be using it the most? What if you got some private buy-in?
Well, I mean, cemeteries, you know, they pay half of that. This, you know, when we seal coated out here, going to the cemetery, that was a, you know, they pay fifty percent of it. A seal coat without the base has marginal chance of success.
Wanting to do this to the truck traffic, you need to make sure you got a subgrade in it.
Well, absolutely. That will never hold up, ever, without this.
Whether they're a player or not, I know Sam had mentioned Landis, cuz it's a lot of their traffic going to pine.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and so, you know, on that one, you know, and then you, when you do these, okay. The people are concerned about how fast the traffic's gonna go. And their concern is, well, my God, all you did was make the traffic go faster, so I don't know. However, I think in certain cases, they're very. They're they're probably more economical than what we're doing for grand resurfacing. I think that's what we'll find out down there on Obanion Road, if that holds together. But every three or four years, that's gonna have to be re, you know, redone with the seal code and and maybe eventually put some asphalt on it to build up a pavement. But yeah, we can go take it.
I just have a four all right down there in Menlo.
Yep.
Maybe reach out to Sam or Corey and say, I don't know what time you do it.
Yeah.
If we begin by one.
So we we kind of know, yeah, one o'clock will be fine. Yeah, that's generally when we're wrapping things up. But those are, you know, that's kind of the, you know, you guys have been around since we've been been doing those, so you kind of know what. What to expect there. And then uh, the the Grand Resurfacing Summit, Kyle called about that too. He'd been at a four county meeting. I don't know what the four counties are that you guys meet with.
Menona, Harrison, and Shelby.
In Shelby, okay. And, you know, they thought, you know, that it would be a good idea to have another one of those. You know, the last time we did it, we hosted it. We paid for, I mean, the county paid for the lunch for anybody that attended that.
Yeah.
We had counties coming from Plymouth Woodbury. We invited a lot of the surrounding counties, had really good attendance.
Good information.
And I set it all up, good information. Um, you know, it was a little bit of a unfortunate thing that they, you know.
Yeah.
Couple of counties decided to come and start taking rock out when they found out what we had down here. Um, so that was a bit disappointing. What I was really hoping for there was that we would get this kind of rise up and. Create some sort of a coalition of the counties that all have similar issues to figure out maybe some sort of a common problem, and that never happened. In fact, it backfired a little bit on us, you know, so, um, I'll set it up. I already talked to, you know, the. To have like some of the university speakers uh that talk, and there was this Hillel, uh, Celine, that that uh. He's a professor at Iowa State, does a lot of research. And he did a lot of research on the twelve percent overload. Gave a presentation on that, you know, how it, how it impacts our roadways. Uh, he's more than happy to come out, but they 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 can't come out during. When, you know, classes are in session, so he said I could come out like that second week of January, or there's a gap in January. That he could come out. I talked to uh the new uh research engineer um for the counties. He would come out. And, uh, you know, so I could, I could help put something together if 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 you all wanna do something, you know, um. So.
Yeah, I I think it was good. Ye- yes, you're right, because unfortunately what happened with her.
Yeah. Free country. I was really hoping that we'd see more of a, you know, uh, maybe a creation of some sort of a coalition.
Bo says they're doing their own trucking now. They're not, it doesn't sound like they're getting a lot off of them.
They've always done their own trucking.
But I'm saying.
Oh, they're hauling. Yeah, yeah, um, but.
It's all they're getting right now.
Yeah.
Could you actually put it on the agenda to form a correlation and actually have the conversation?
Well, you know, everybody thought it was a great idea, but nobody wanted to put one together, you know? It was my idea. I put it all together, went to all the work, you know, and I I'll do it again, you know, but.
When you could always charge a registration or something to help cover the cost of lunch or something. We do at that four county meeting. We pay a small registration fee just to cover the cost of lunch, but.
So I mean, how your schedules look in January, I was trying to look, there's no January there. But it was like uh that, a whole week of through the eighteenth or something like that. Gosh, we gotta have a twenty twelve, twenty twenty-five, January. On there.
I might have it on the back here.
Like he was thinking that, that Thursday, Friday. No, I don't go.
Fifteen sixteen.
Okay, yeah.
We have New County Officer School.
That week, so what's the Thursday, Friday? Is it seventeenth, eighteenth that week?
No, it's sixteen seventeen.
Okay, then what's the following week?
Twenty-second, twenty-third.
When do we have our supervisor?
Eight, nine. Statewide is February.
Yeah, February.
It's New County Officer Officer School in January.
Okay, yeah. Cuz he's got B R B first week. Yeah. Maybe Monday the thirteen. You know? Be doing on Monday, I guess, much time, so. Were you at, you weren't at the last?
I believe so.
Yeah, I was. So you weren't there either? Okay. I mean, it was before you guys, it was just you and Kyle. Okay, okay, yeah. Well, I'll line up some speakers and get a ready, a place lined up.
Monday the thirteenth, that'll be a good day.
Well, I'll shoot for that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that he'll be available.
Lucky day.
Cuz we were talking like Thursday, Friday, the end of that week, um, but I'll I'll see once.
I I just even from a personal standpoint, what you put on last night, I learned so much about it, just the mixture of rock you need or aggregate you need together, the.
Yeah.
Binding, I I mean, just, there's so much to learn.
And so that's just Jeremy Ashlock, and and I have not talked to him, he wasn't at the engineers conference, but I'll talk to him. Be him, Hillel, um, and then, um, oh shoot. I can't think of the other name right now, but anyhow.
Supervisor standpoint, I use so much of that information when, you know, we get hit up in the co- coffee shop or the co-op, we need all wire. Well, after that meeting, no, that isn't the perfect answer either, either, you know, but to be able to walk people through and explain. It seemed like you gave them a lot of information to.
Great education, yeah, yeah, and.
You know what I should do is when the guys are up in Humboldt County loading hogs, that's the next summer, get a picture of all them damn toples and them all white long roads.
Yeah, our best. And 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 so, I mean, there's a, um. You know, a lot of different options, and that's, that's what we had, the uh, we were actually doing some research on Deloitte Boulevard. They're, they were supposed to, they come out, done all kinds of samples. They were supposed to get the material down, but it didn't work out this fall, so, um. But I'll see what dates, I'll keep you on the loop and see what dates we can kind of get for everybody to try to do that.
I got no plans.
So, okay, well, that's all I have here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you.
Same call, um. An email was sent out about what the state decided to do. I know you mentioned before about the funding aspect. And how that was gonna change and some of the rural people might lose their, was it the engineer?
The the Surf Deck, okay, I'll let you finish.
Well, I'm trying to, I was trying to find it to see where it came from. I can't remember if I sent sent it out or if you sent it out or if the Iowa County of Engineers sent it out.
Just recently?
Just recently, in the last two weeks about the funding, you know, how, what board did you sit on?
Surf Deck has been moved. That that email was just sent out about a week or two.
And you, so you were happy with what that email said as far as they keep, no.
No.
Cuz that email made it sound like they were keeping the structure basically the same.
They are, I still.
Or the formula, I guess, the formula.
The formula, everything stays the same, but I'm not happy with it because I see no point in it. The thing worked perfectly. My concern is, and we had some discussions, you know, Tom Roy, you know, Tom was instrumental in getting that set up. That at some point in time, there could be this change that could impact rural counties. Because of somebody, somebody somewhere along the way, now that it's completely out of our hand. We we have no control.
Authority away from us.
So that's why I don't like it, Craig. I like the fact that at this point in time, they haven't messed with it. I'm concerned that that they will.
Okay.
The potential for impropriety exists.
Because the people, the people that should be is is the engineers and the supervisors, and we have absolutely zero control now over that.
And the people that we try to talk to the most and get the least input with, now I have control of that. That would probably be the easiest.
Yes, under the D O T, and and they're good people there. They have no desire to.
Their priorities are different.
They have no desire to change things right now, but they really had no interest in 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 how five hundred and fifty million dollars were sub-allocated amongst the counties. And now they have to, you know, so essentially the committee structure is saying very similar, but it's an ad hoc committee. It has really, doesn't have any authority necessarily per se. If some commissioner comes along and says, hey, I wanna change this, I want, you know. They can make it happen.
No consequence of being voted in or out.
Yes.
Ding ding ding.
Appointed, and 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 we as the counties who are are directly impacted have absolutely no say in it. Be willing to serve on that.
There were a few other things going on in the state.
I mean, I don't. But it changed and they left it the same, so I'm happy with that, you know. Sometimes maybe we're too presumptive to. They didn't make it any worse, exactly.
There we go.
Yeah. So there you go. But this twelve percent, when this professor, and I'm surprised he's even allowed with the presentation, people is with it. How damaging that is.
What what is, what is he telling you different than what we talked about the minute we heard about it?
Nothing.
Wasn't there a state or, I don't remember this, the number, but it was like for every ten percent over, it costs sixty percent more damage or.
And he said, that's the the best case scenario. He said, it's much worse than that in most cases. And they have a lot of data and research to back it up, you know, and.
This is something that should have been done before they ever made that decision.
Yeah, wow. So I wanted to invite representatives. That's the other reason why I was hoping for Thursday, Friday, was that they would be in session and maybe we could get them.
Maybe we should do, we need to find out, is it, is it, is one of our our local counties?
Saturday morning clock.
No, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
You know, Best used to be the transportation chair at the house. Who the heck is the town, do you know? Be nice to get that person at that.
Who is that?
Whoever the transportation chair is from the house in the Senate.
If you, you know.
I mean, it used to be Best, Brian would have came to something like that.
But they'll be in session. The problem, Ty, is they don't listen, they don't wanna listen to us.
Well, it's some of a.
A lot of times they don't, obviously they don't, because they're changing things, but anyhow.
Hey, how far did we get when you and me and Kyle went to Des Moines?
Nowhere, yeah. So, you know, that that lobbyist I saw him.
Yeah.
You know, and I went right up.
Could you go alone?
And I said, uh, I said, you know, I said. I don't like a lot of the things that you do. But I said, I respect you because you're very good at what you do. And he is. He's very good at what he does. And uh, I'm like, what do you think? You know, and.
Of course I was good at one.
He looked at me like. Oh, well.
You had to think about that.
Well, you know, we all still need to get along. Everybody has jobs to do differently, and they just have.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Ag relationships.
Alright, our next item is to discuss, take action, set time, date, location for public caring for budget amendment uh this for year twenty twenty-five. We have that in front of us right now. And so, uh, courthouse.
So I gave you a few. Things.
For me to help. It's like. So did I give you one of these? You got one of these? Yeah. So that's, um, should show everything that's. That I know of. For this budget hearing, our budget amendment, um, pheasants forever, the seed for the habitat, and I think that's. Is that fence too, maybe? I can't remember. I remember. How much is fence gonna be? Did we get a quote on that?
Throw right around five thousand.
I hope it includes the fence.
I, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. Well, how many acres are we seeding? You know, right?
Hundred and two or hundred and six. Cause.
I feel like that includes fence. I put this together a long time ago, so I don't remember.
I don't.
What number are we, are we looking at?
Thirty one thousand. Look at the county, county farm. Back here, I just, my cover crop, that's just try to call and rye. It was about twenty bucks an acre. And our acres.
Three twenty thousand. Yours isn't highlighted.
And that's not, that's not counting the seed here. That's the seed itself. I'll look at my stuff, so that number might change. And I don't know. I know, I don't remember.
But just for reference of what I just.
Right, and, right.
But seed for the whole damn place is gonna be quite a bit.
Right. Well, I just said my cover crop was twenty bucks an acre and that's just rye and tread account. Okay. I'm sure this is more than just that.
Yeah. That was around. Clo- close to two hundred dollars an acre. So a hundred acres would be twenty grand. And.
And that's applied or that is seed.
That was, that was, what'd you say?
Applied, is that an applied cost?
Coleman, I don't think was charging. I think he was.
Oh.
Doing it for sake of doing it. But then we also get some, we also get some. We also get some money then reimbursed back to us.
Right, but we need the expenditure, we need the total expenditure. And that's what this is.
That we're gonna pay up for.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the next one.
So I think that covers both.
Okay, you do.
I do.
I will double check and see what I have for notes on that.
Okay.
Um, the next one is general supplemental and that is, um, for those tablets.
Which we talked about.
The thirty six thousand, yet we wouldn't have purchased them without your approval and you all knew it was gonna be part of a budget amendment. The rural basic fund, that is for roadside department and that is their spray truck and then the extra seed cost. The incre- increase in, uh, usage and cost of seed. And both of those numbers are indicated on that spreadsheet, a two, one hundred ninety four thousand and, um, just over twenty three thousand dollars. And then that we have the. It's right in front of you. No, okay. The capital projects fund, which is fifteen twenty four out of the courthouse. Um, that is, um, second floor HVAC. Um, that is the. Mini splits for the judge, the new IT area, the VA office and the engineer's office on the first floor. The judge is the, on the third floor, obviously, but the rest of those are on the first floor. And then, um, that last number, a hundred thousand dollars for the CCCS building for basement. I don't know what the remaining cost will be and I'm just, I just wanna make sure we have enough money to finish the project over there. And if we don't need it all, it'll obviously stay in capital projects fund, uh, for additional, you know.
Consistency.
Yeah. Yep, which, yeah, cause did I even include flooring?
Yep, it's on.
Projects.
You've got, you've got flooring, eight thousand.
Where?
Well, let me ask this.
That, we spent that already, yeah. But I mean flooring in the courthouse.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Were we doing something in that?
Um, they're gonna do Paul's room since the lease gets out.
Yeah, I gotta, I'll look at that.
We were kinda looking to do, I mean, pretty much all the floors.
Yeah, they quoted everything.
Where they're, especially where they walk a lot, like going to the treasurer's office.
It's not. That's eighty thou- almost eighty thousand dollars. I feel like the quote was around seventy seven.
That's what I was thinking.
If I remember right.
For the whole court out.
Yeah. Everything but the third floor. And all the flooring except for marble.
Yeah.
Right, not touching any marble.
Didn't they do it all marble back then?
I don't know. Probably, cost, yeah.
Yeah, cheap board supervisor.
I kinda knew the answer.
It's an inherent detail that, you know, that isn't ever talked about, but.
With the addition of the flooring.
So that, we'll add that eighty thousand on there and I'll, I'll look at the county farm info to make sure that. The seed and the fence are included in that thirty one thousand.
Well, let me ask you.
Up it. It's probably gonna be almost three hundred thousand dollar budget amendment.
Well, how does the, cause they're their own taxing entity, how do the EMAs work now? Cause we're gonna have to do some on.
Right, but it's a trans, or it's not a transfer. The county funds that, so. Not only do they have to do a budget amendment, but we'll have to do another budget amendment to.
So we'll have to do a budget amendment.
To transfer to BMA.
We'll have to do.
This board and that board.
And then their budget amendment will come before this board? To be approved?
Yeah.
Okay. And then that comes out of our general or?
I wanna say it's not the general fund.
Supplemental.
Is it supplemental, maybe?
Cause I think that's where their taxing comes from is supplemental, if I remember right. And I've read so much crap in the last several months, I don't remember one thing versus another.
No, I know, I agree.
Well, some of us too, if we overshoot a little bit, we're just not gonna levy for next year for.
Right.
What we need for capital projects.
Exactly. Yeah, and if we get through the tower project, the EMA budget should shrink a little bit. I mean, we're gonna have those ongoing costs, of course, we all know that. And, you know, the new continued wage of the new director and things like that, but it should still be less. Than what we had during the tower project over the last few years.
Definitely.
I agree.
And yeah, it should be less than that.
I agree.
But, yeah. So.
And that's, should be done, I think we put some of the stuff into the August final payment, just get it into the next budget year. That was one of our deals that we did with Raycom.
To get.
But the tower should be up and going sometime between April and, let's say, April and June. That's my.
Yeah. So yeah, that's all the stuff you gotta figure out.
With those additions.
I think it's around three hundred thousand dollars.
What's kind of the timeframe you, are we at ten and twenty?
Um.
When do you want?
Well, I was, that's what I was just thinking about, cause we're not meeting on the twenty fourth, so probably be the thirty first, December thirty first, which will give us a good long time. To get it published to, yeah, so December thirty one would probably be the date. At AM, yeah, if that's what you want.
That we always do, ten AM, usually.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll move to set the.
But are you meeting late in the day that day?
Yeah, I think we're.
Which isn't, I mean, that's not the end of the universe. We just have to allow time for.
Ten AM and then have.
Right.
Open the.
Right, exactly.
Ten AM then I'll go home and come back for four o'clock meeting.
I know, that would be good. And we can always start your meeting at three thirty or something to allow for some of these items to happen.
Are we sure that's four o'clock, thirty first?
That, whatever you want.
Published anything yet, so we can still kind of.
Say.
That's not a Tuesday then, thirty first.
Thirty is, is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It is Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday.
We're gonna have our general, we're gonna have our meeting anyway Tuesday morning, right?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, you wouldn't have to.
I think we should just have one later.
If you're, if you're doing the cash count that day and it's happening late in the afternoon, I mean, it's kind of up to you. I would say one day.
Afternoon meeting.
Okay.
You sleep late that morning?
Sure.
If you can remember to.
We are, New Year's celebration will not be able to start until after we get the cash count done.
We'll see. You'll know when I get here.
Who am I being all bossy?
So then you wanna set it at four o'clock? What time do you want the hearing for? If we're gonna start at three thirty?
Why don't we do it at three thirty five?
Okay.
That way we have that done and then we'll do cash count.
The public hearing at three thirty five, is that what you said?
After we get done with our opening ceremony.
Yeah.
Just get it done.
Okay.
That's how, that's how you can keep things on schedule. You just do it right away.
You're gonna wait till the thirty first to start doing that? Winky winky.
I'm staying on this one.
Dig.
Hope the girls go.
Dig, dig. I don't think I, 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 if you guys wanna share this, so this is ARPA funding. And what's left, ninety nine thousand dollars is left of ARPA funding.
That's already committed.
It's committed, yeah, you're right. It's committed to the rest of the remodel over at the.
Public.
CCCS, but that's upstairs. So it's been hard for me to keep that in my mind, that the stuff that's going on upstairs. Is separate from the stuff going on downstairs.
Well, you're gonna have this, uh, bid for that, uh, new lighting will come out of that and the deep cleaning will come out of that. But don't you believe?
Yes. Yeah.
We're, we're just about done.
So again, it sounds like some of Jake's stuff might cost more, might be more.
Well, that's what happens when things.
I know, when it takes two years.
I know, I talked to Cory yesterday.
And that's fine, there should be money for that.
Like doors, the locks aren't exactly working out. We might have to rekey them and things like that.
Okay.
So.
So hopefully through the whole thing, there should be enough money, um, to do. The IT part and the upstairs part.
I think.
And what's left.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, and there is a, well, we talked about it on Friday, a little bit of a concern on how to keep the basement area secure from somebody that comes in from the upstairs. And then just goes down to the basement and loses it.
Trey Ho's going through there this afternoon.
Yeah. Some concerns.
To look at some of that stuff, some of those issues that are, yeah.
We'll have to get that chain order that says no public access so that the public doesn't think there's anything down there for them, but that's not gonna keep the person at, uh.
Right.
Just in the wrong place, so.
Right, exactly.
All right, so do we have a motion for the, setting the time and date for the public hearing? Did we?
We said the public hearing, what, three thirty five?
Thirty first.
Tuesday, December thirty first.
If that's acceptable to everyone, that could be the motion.
Tell your motion.
Okay, start. All right, any further discussion? Otherwise I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any pose? Chair votes aye, so we will have that public hearing at three thirty five on the thirty first. Alrighty, left here is, uh, we can't do this till ten fifty five, so I suggest we take a little break and go down and, uh. I had not heard back from Dave on getting in there. There's a chance that, um. I don't know, the way it could be in there, so we can just kinda.
Possible, Tuesday.
Uh, let me call Dave real quick and just see if he's around.
He might not have seen he got a text.
Happens to everybody.
Yeah, I get them all the time.
Terry has, uh, Taya gotten hold of you lately? Taya, not me.
Uh huh.
I said, you talked about maybe coming in at mid, end of December to just kinda give us an update on.
Oh.
How the funds are being spent, what they're doing.
So Terry, um, when you look at these funds and they do have balances in them, to access the balance, is that why you have to do the budget?
Yeah, and that yellow line that I moved shows you what is budgeted to transfer from.
Oh.
From which?
Rural basic to like room.
Road, secondary roads and. Give a key to that. I guess I have one here too.
So from rural services.
Kinda want to go back and.
Do those individual accounts.
Yeah, rural services, basic.
Basic, right.
To the rural services supplemental, which is like, like a hypers and all those things and then secondary roads.
So this shows you're going from here to these.
All right, thanks. Okay, well, we'll, we'll look around, so we'll go down there, see what we find. I just wanted to check that before it locked down. All right, thank you. All right, bye bye. All right, he's on his break right now, but, uh, he says Franko can get us in, but he would be surprised if it's not locked, but it's a Bob and not a kid. So let's go check that out.
And he's got a.
He does, he does. He's on his break right now, so if we need it, we can just call him. I, I think they did a break.
No. Cause it's a paid break, so they can be called off of a paid break to come and do what we need them to do. Sorry.
Are we in recess?
Yes, recess. I don't think we need a motion on that.
No, it's, I know that they're in the minutes.
This move to our meeting, but other.
All in period.